You have our attendance, Kim?
Yep, I do.
Alrighty. Everyone have a chance to look over the minutes from last month? And if everybody's good with that, we need a motion to approve those.
I just have a correction, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
And I'm just in the process of pulling it up.
And I'm just gonna say, like I said in my email, there's things missing that we did discuss at the last meeting. My apologies, I've been in and out of my regular Friday office because of this COVID stuff. And I don't have access to all my files, so I did the best I could and we'll get there soon.
You're doing a good job. Keep up the good work.
It's rough when you can't access your files and you know you had something typed up or put in of, you know, the document, but you can't get to it and... And the copy of the master plan I sent, if it looks all chopped up, it's because it is. I was sort of trying to separate it by sections just for my own, so we can see where we're at and what maybe still needs to be looked at and such. And so the copy you had is my working copy that I had at the central office.
And I did get information from the hospital. I sent it out to Sue, but wasn't sure who else I had them. They typed up a whole new paragraph, so I don't know.
I can get that, Troy. Thank you.
And just as a follow-up in with that, I received this morning from the Health Department and I did pass that along to Kim. So she has that to include for us now.
Oh, hi, Sue.
Hello, how are you?
How are you?
Excellent.
Yaimu, did you find your correction to the minutes?
Yes, yes. I'm just in the process of pulling it up. For whatever reason, it's just slow.
Do you want a hard copy? Here's a hard copy if you can find it.
I mean, it's already up, I'm just...
Oh, Sue, you met the beach tonight.
I'm in Lake Bobby's.
Are you?
Wow.
Wish I was fishing.
It's chilly out there.
You're getting ready for that outdoor dining experience, Sue, we're gonna all have for the next three weeks.
Um, okay.
Are you setting up for an early bass tournament? Are you setting up for an early bass tournament? Fishing.
Ah, there it goes.
Hi.
Thanks, David. I just texted Randy and said, hey, the clock needs a battery.
No, it just needs a second.
How's that?
It screwed it up when I changed the time.
Alright, if you're ready, I'll just... So I would like to...
Commissioner Carolyn, go ahead.
Sure. Just a correction to the minutes that were provided for October 19, 2020. I'd like to amend just a cold order spelling error. And, you know, if you want to amend it and make a motion to amend it and place it on file, that'd be fine.
You got that, Kim? There, now it's spelled... What sections are those in?
Yeah, I'm hoping... Kim, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm looking up a little bit, but what number are you under? Where you said there's a spelling error?
Yes, so I'm just looking at the minutes right in the beginning of page one of the minutes where it says cold order, just the spelling errors. If you want to just...
Okay, let's see it.
Yeah, that's all it is that I have from the sun. So with that amended correction, I'd like to say I move that we place the minutes of October 19, 2020, Planning Commission minutes, and place it on file.
I'll support that.
Alright, a motion and support to accept the minutes as amended. Is there any discussion? Any other corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, the same? Alrighty, and on to our agenda for this month. Do we have any additions or corrections to the proposed agenda as Kim sent out? I would like to add under item nine, any other business, the future of the Hillsdale County Planning Commission as a discussion item.
If you've made a motion, I can support that.
So, alright.
Say that again.
She's just supporting my addition to...
Say your motion again.
Yeah, we're adding under item nine the future of the Hillsdale County Planning Commission.
Check, yeah.
Is there any other additions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to have another addition is, if you would like to put it under new business, I have heard back from Community Action Agency CEO Toby Berry in regards with adding information in regards with the housing and the data that we can place with the master plan for the next year 2021.
Okay, can we put that under unfinished business?
Yes, please. So if you would like to do it, I would like to make it as B, under unfinished business.
Alright, got that, Kim?
Seven, heading the...
Information from the Community Action Agency to add to the master plan.
Housing information from CA.
Yes, under unfinished business, item number B. B as in brown.
Seven, B.
Alright, anybody else have anything else? If not, I would move that we approve the agenda as amended. Do we have support for that?
I second that.
Alright, Commissioner Carolyn supports it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same? Alrighty, public comment. Since we have no one physically present here, if there is anyone out there in the wonderful world of WebEx that would like to public add public comment, now is the time. Seeing none, hearing none? We will close public comment. We have no public hearings this month, so we are on to item seven, the county master plan. Kim, why don't you go ahead and start with just a general overview of where we are at? And then we will hear from Commissioner Carolyn.
Okay, I have added the... I updated the health section, which actually I should have a copy of the latest. And also added the health section we received from the Health Department. On Fridays, I just continue to go through and look at the graphs, seeing if there's any updated information on the September's website. I did actually also receive, well, article nine, the business investment. Yeah, I did get a bit of a question for now. It is a year, it looks similar to me, but I just thought heading up, so we do have that. Please, I'd like to ask you all for me to help me update those. If the email I sent given some items, just as I'm going through things that maybe seem that we may want to update or reword or just like for people on the housing, how it talked about very few subdivision housing elements that constructively planned and still happening. Just first, we don't know if all of this per village is still accurate. The, in that same description, there's a couple other sections that highlighted. Those kind of are the stuff I highlighted. I just thought maybe we might want to look at more specifically to see if the actual recording is still correct.
Okay. Very good.
Have not, I'm aware, gotten information on campus of what they're doing. So that is highlighted.
Is that Camden Township or Camden Village, Kim?
What's that?
Is that Camden Township or Camden Village?
Did you say Camden?
Isn't that what you said you had not got information back from? Was Camden?
Uh, it said the campus.
Oh, campus, okay. I'm sorry.
I don't know if you guys can hear me, but it's something's called my blog. If I have to keep saying what? I believe most of the titles I have included mostly, it's not just one site, a census site. Uh, C, table two, I believe I'm working on, but I don't have the most recent here in my... The other C that indicated it was the 2018 five-year testament, so we have those updated. I think to take ten, like labor statistics, Sue, I don't know if you can help me on that.
Which one was it?
Uh, area labor statistics. So maybe like the number of jobs, hello? Like, are you fat or anyone retailing, assuming that's... That table was not there for, so I don't know whether for updating.
What page are you on? I'm sorry, because I'm just scrolling through trying to keep up with where we're looking at.
I'm on those thirty-seven, I don't have... Whoops, my...
Okay, let me see.
It's premier, look at that. All of that is the unemployment chart.
Okay, maybe I just hit the wrong copy. Like, my investment tenure summary table is old. It says in 2013.
It should be, the next page should be the one I'm... There's no chart, the one I'm talking about. There's that there right now. Here, what it really is, uh, in that document, that's right on the next page.
And I go back through my email. The document that I have is extremely old that I lost. And I'm thinking it's gotta be the locked document from my email because it's not matching up with what the conversation is there.
Okay, you should just gotten one from me, from my day?
Okay.
January fourteenth, if you'd like to.
Yeah, let me see. Okay, yeah, go ahead. I can certainly help you with the latest, it's not a problem.
I just sent it to email against textbook I'm looking at. I guess the, and I guess the certain areas that probably needs to be looked at. I do have some of the perp plate. I just have to cipher how to that section based on how it's been viewed. I have the...
Very static there.
It's feedback.
Oh, is that right? Okay.
Uh, the report, the... I did put in some maps and some other information. And I'm not sure. I was actually gonna try to call the alibi and see if that public transit section is still correct and see if people... I don't know what they said used to do. The average of 300 rides per day. I don't know if all that is still correct. So just was going to count to five. Other than that, I just giggled back what the head says on where we are next. And what the census being conducted right now, we want to... I hate to have this averaging how new census data is really in the corner. If it does, if we lose the intact and we have to do this again in five years, makes sense to put the most recent data in.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say something if I may. Kim, I want to thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I appreciate you putting all this together. And I think it's right because after all the research and all the meetings that we've had with the Board of Commissioners and, you know, trying to, you know, work things out. And I personally believe, rather than what other nearby counties do, and I know one of the counties that was specifically talked about at one of the meetings or on a telephone conversation by another commissioner, I think if we were to pursue, I think we should, most likely when we have a county planning commission spread out there, put there on the website. Because I know a few years back, or a couple of years back, when we did have everything on the website, that suddenly crashed and we lost all the data. So now is a good place. We're in a good place where we can put this and have it in place as a county, that we have a master plan in place and, you know, kind of basically which oversees what all the other townships are doing. And of course, I always agree that we're not telling the townships that they need to adopt, but we definitely encourage them to do. And that's the whole basis of it. So having to keep that, and as far as what I heard and understood with all the static going on, and I think next year when we do happen to hear in July 2021 as it sunsets, I think it should be looked at. And I think this planning commission that will be in existence next year should, you know, go and keep this in place the way it is. I'm sorry? Sorry, did you hear me at all? Don't think they can...
I'm sorry, I just can't hear like, like every word here. It's terrible. I don't know because I am...
Give...
It's not big, they're just all chopped up.
Yeah. Um, I need to get a minute to eat that. If you guys are just... I don't know if the computer does...
Feedback.
Yeah.
I'd like to stop for just a moment.
Could be when you have another device next that probably also creates a little... I just put mine on airplane. I don't know if that's contributing to any... Mine is not. Was anybody else able to hear what I said? Troy, were you able to hear at all? Or Erin?
Yeah, my hearing audio is very choppy also.
Yes, and we are also hearing you all very choppy. I think it's just the feedback.
Yeah. Yeah, Troy and Sue seem clear. I think that it, that Kim may have some feedback issues going on there.
Right.
Our port papers going correct.
What'd he say?
I'm either calling or...
Right, that would be another option to call, and I guess...
Kim just made us all dizzy.
Do let us know when you can hear us clear.
She's adjusting.
Well, anyway.
Okay, can you guys hear me still?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you actually good.
Oh, and I think this is a little better.
Okay.
Yes.
What about you? Can you hear me right now, or is it too choppy?
It's a little heavy, but I think I can hear a little better.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I hate to have you back up.
Yes, I can definitely back up and... I, all I was saying was that since we do know that in July 2021, things sunsets, and I personally believe whatever we had on the website with our county planning permission, our master plan in the previous years, which had crashed, I think it's a good framework now that we can put firstly everything into the website and have it there as an overseen to the rest of the other townships. Although we don't adopt anything for any other township, but we do encourage every township to have one. So I think this way gives us a little bit of a more platform and a framework to have our county planning commission to continue. That's what I was saying, even though we did have some, you know...
So you're just saying to go with what we have and not wait for the updated census data?
No, we can continue to update and continue to put in whatever updates we got, definitely. I am all for that. Continue to pursue that. But I think it's a good framework if we can have the website all set up and have us all on board. I just want to thank you for all the equalization maps. And I think it looks good what you put there, whatever you sent yesterday, the day before. This is, this is good. Like I said, I do have some information that I'll be providing under unfinished business, you know, step B for the housing that I received from, at length actually, which I sat and worked out with the Community Action Agency. So I think this is good.
Kim, have you heard back from Marty Taylor's department? They got the building data?
Say that again. This is terrible.
I'm, I'm sorry. Have you heard back from Marty Taylor in building inspection and gotten the building data?
Yeah, that's what I said. I need to cipher how it goes into the, that section of the chart, the graph that was there before.
Okay, I'm sorry. It was a little unclear earlier, so...
Okay.
And I did, I did...
I'm gonna say, try calling again.
I'm going to. Give me just a second. I'm gonna mute. Oh, you know what? I wonder if... Okay, just a moment.
Yeah, not breathing, baby.
I think you got calling to the WebEx.
Oh. Hope the kids don't have this problem at school. It'd be a mess.
They do a little bit. And that's also works.
Yeah.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
This is not any better. I wonder if David can help us? Is this how the Board of Commissioners meetings are?
Uh, no, if I may. We haven't done any virtual meetings lately. So we've been doing in-person, the Board of Commissioners. Were you able to hear that, Sue?
I can hear, okay. I'm still struggling with the version of the master plan I have because it's, it's old. It's, I don't have anything updated to the master plan I have. And I'm not sure if I'm, I don't know what I'm doing.
Is that, Sue, is that the document that Kim mailed out to us? I think on maybe Friday? Do you have that document? Because I think that's the newest version. Or are you still working with a copy? The old copy from several months ago?
It's the copy that I just received in my email a couple minutes ago.
Okay.
Hate to say this, but maybe we should adjourn and we'll come back when we got a bit together and understand what's going on. It's very confusing.
I don't mind her calling on my phone and I could put it on speakerphone. Would you like that?
I wondered about this phone, is that...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to propose something. If everybody can hear me, I'd like to propose if Kim wants to call, she can, she's welcome to call on the phone line here or call on my phone so we can have her on the speakerphone.
Kim, you want to try that? I think we lost Kim. She's gone.
I threw her stuff out instead of that clip.
I don't have her phone number. Do you want to text her to call? Mine is nice and loud and she's welcome to do that. Text her my number and she can call.
I wonder if she'll have a phone yet?
Can you text her my number, Jack?
Yeah, just...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Evidently engaged in something, so... Because she's not in picture right now, so...
Okay, so what we're supposed to do, if I can figure this out, is everyone should mute themselves if you're not speaking.
Yeah, I was also wondering if they all...
I'm trying to keep, but I should have the option somewhere, but I'm not saying...
Yeah, my number is 517.
That just means like my phone is Troy and here. It's on mute. So right here if we're not speaking.
There's no feedback or clear, no?
Okay. Okay, can anybody hear me?
Yeah, you sound really good right now.
We can hear you clear now. Can you hear us clear?
I can hear you guys. So it sounds like those of us who are calling in just need to mute if you're not speaking. But if you guys can mute yourself, I'll do the unmute here so that each of you can do it yourself. That way if you do want to speak, you can unmute yourself.
I think that's a very good... Yeah, that's, that's the way, it might work just fine, that way, Kim.
Okay, Sue, why don't we try to get you caught up and find out where you're at?
I lost the connection.
Now we have no audio.
Can't hear you.
Is it, is it frozen or...
No, it's moving. It was talking, but all of a sudden it's disappeared. The sound.
Everybody's muted except Kim. Kim, we can't hear you if you're...
I cannot hear you.
She's going pretty good for a minute.
She's welcome to call me, Jack.
Yes, give me your...
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You hear you?
Okay, can I... Does my dad's calling here?
Kim?
Is my dad there on the phone?
Yeah, yeah. Will you answer the phone?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
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 Who can hear me?
I can hear you.
Troy? Can you hear me? Brad, Jen?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
So let's see if we... I just buttoned mute all, so the conference room, there we go. Let's try the, my request unmuted. That's a clear.
Give her the option if she wants to call me. 517, 306, 7021. And I'll take her call right here, you know. She's welcome to call me, so that way we can... Because we're only having problems from her, the feedback, I mean. So she's welcome to call me.
Why is the conference room muted?
We key have something pop up on the screen, I can't read it from across the table, so.
You're being asked to unmute yourself, so.
Unmute all.
Now you can unmute yourself.
But not everyone's unmuted. All right, hold on a second.
So I don't know if I can, because your work phone won't give a text message.
Just call her and give her my number to call me, so that way we can have her on the speakerphone.
That's going to try to help us out, let me go to the button here. Okay, meeting ID is 1133, 130, 513. Okay, unmute. 1133, 130, 513. Okay, if we have, uh, two, 133, 13, uh, apple, uh, apple, 13, apple, 13, uh, apple.
Brad, we need to have those. Blades on, I don't know, when they're going to start producing electricity.
Sometime, hopefully by the end of the year. I actually did see the blaze on rotating. I'm sure they were testing, but.
I wondered, because it's been kind of, stayed out for a while. And that power's going to feed where?
And the consumer's grid. I saw it a lot.
Okay, okay, I can hear them loud if she calls.
I'm sorry. Um. It was one of the ones that's fairly close to North Adams.
Okay, Scott? I don't.
Yeah.
If you're talking, does it unmute you, I like, I don't, I have trouble unmuting anyone, even though I said unmute all.
All right, let me see if I can hear you.
That sounds good. He sounds good. Something doesn't ask you.
Just so you know, we are hearing you, Kim, and we're hearing you, Scott. Please respond back if you can hear us.
I can hear you.
Okay, great, Scott, thank you.
Okay, they can all hear me, I believe, but like Troy, Aaron and Sue can hear me, but the conference room, like, I'm not getting any response from them. So I don't know if they can hear me or can't hear me or what.
Kim, I can hear you.
Is there a way for them to unmute themselves on the device in the conference room? Am I be able to do that on their end? Yes. Yes, you just unmuted yourself.
I just unmuted here, can you hear us?
I can unmute at will, I, I'm on my screen.
Yeah.
So maybe they've got a mute going.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you now, but you guys were not hearing me?
Yes, we were, Kim.
We were, I can hear you.
Oh, you were.
Very clearly, actually, very clearly now.
So I think, is Scott still here? I thought he was going to help us, so I looked.
Yep, I'm, I don't have privileges to unmute and mute people right now. I don't know, if you can make me like a, I think you have to assign me as like a co-host or something like that.
I thought I did.
Yeah, I'm a presenter, but I, I still. So if you. Yeah.
Oh, remember, I was wondering what you are playing.
Nice April night out there today. Too bad it wasn't April.
What would've made it yesterday?
Yeah. Was without power.
Okay, on the bottom right, do you see where it says participants in chat?
Yeah.
Click on participants.
Okay.
Now you see the list of everybody that's in, right? All right.
Uh, I see me and you, yeah, there's other people, yeah.
Okay, if you right, right click to my name.
Yep.
Go to change role.
Change role, oh, co-host.
And make co-host, yeah, okay. All right, now I can unmute and mute people now, I will, so I'll go ahead and mute everybody except, uh.
Well, Namu was talking, so we need to hear again what she has said.
Okay, she, they're unmuted, so she can start talking if she wishes.
Okay, you go ahead.
Yeah, hi, Scott, hi, thank you for your help, Kim, thank you, and please respond if you can hear me.
I can hear you, it's fine.
All right, thank you so much.
Yes.
So.
Okay, so.
Where, where was the last that you heard me, sorry?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so I'm sorry, but go back to what you were saying about the July of 2021, the sunsetting of the master plan and, um, that's about all I caught, I, because we were discussing whether we should wait for the updated census data.
Yes, thank you for that response, and yes, I think we should update as much as we can and continue thereafter, after that what sunsets, and I, personally, I think if anyone can make a proper platform to move us forward, I think it would be this board currently that is serving and wishes to serve next year as well. So yes, the plan, as far as I'm concerned, and I believe that there will be support of this group within the planning commission board, that we will pursue this planning commission irregardless to move forward, you know, continuing what we started. So yes, in regards to any updates that we're looking for, because as I was assigned to go and get some updates, I have sat with Toby Berry, who is the CEO of Community Action Agency, since I sit on that board, I've had the humbleness and I'm very humbled to sit on that board with them and so had, had that chance to sit and bring in a very lengthy research of what we are doing or what has been in contribution as it relates with Hills Hill County for our housing. So yes, in pursuance of next year, as things sunsets in July 2021, I believe we should move forward and continue to keep our county planning commission in existence so that we can oversee as a board in the county, as planning commissioner, as planning commissions and board, that we can oversee all the other townships within their infrastructure, irregardless if townships are, you know, for their own planning commission or not, that's not the whole essence of this, as maintaining a county planning commission, we have got the privilege now, and as a board, what we started right now, and I would concur with, I think the last meeting that we had, as board member Jack McLean had mentioned, that we need to continue, and I think we should put that as an effort and get our ducks in a row, and I believe that can be further discussed within that framework, what we have in the next part of the agenda in regards with, you know, in pursuance. So that is what I was saying earlier, and also where we had got cut off, I wanted to also appreciate what came from the equalization and the GIS, all the mapping, I think it's very thorough, very good, I appreciate Nick Wheeler's efforts on it, yours on it, to having those maps in place. The only thing I wanted to ask of you, but correct me if I'm asking probably too earlier than necessary, is the URL, you know, of all those maps, are we also going to put it, do we have that in place, where we can put that on the corner where people can refer or townships can refer to the website, the URL?
Now, what would you say a URL to the map, what, I guess specifically, what map are you referring to?
Yes.
You can go to the GIS site and look up any map you want in the county at any time, any specific location, I mean, that's not specific to the master plan.
Okay, yeah, as long as.
The map I, the map I'm referring to updating are the, hold on, I'm trying to find the page, the land use plan map, and the one I just sent would have been, I believe, on page 24. Just needs updated, we, it's, we could allow space, small and not real legible. The other is, uh, where is it? Yeah, there's another plan map, the other is the land capability classification map, and I'm seeing that on page 30. We just want to make it more easily readable and moving the legend, I think, from a brochure or something that was in there before, the way it was put on there with the legend and the description and everything, we want to move that of the map.
Right, so Kim, the page 30, you know, the land capability classification map that we have, this doesn't look current. So you think, can you, is it possible for Nick Wheeler to provide?
That's what I already said, he will be updating those for me, he just hasn't, has time to do that yet.
Sounds good, yes, and so that would be great, and I think the page 24, the map we were referring to, the, let me go back, the land use one, I think that also, I don't think it's updated, did I hear you correct? Is that the latest one, or?
No, neither one of those are, I'm waiting for Nick to help me update those, but he's in the middle of prep his tab though, so he does not have time to do it right this moment.
Sure, that's okay, so I think we do have that framework of time, and I think so page 24, page 30, those two pages, I think we, and I think another page that probably needs an update is the page 28, soil maps?
Yeah, I think we were planning on doing that, Commissioner.
Okay.
Yeah, those maps we will be updating.
Got it.
Can you hold for just one second, I'm sorry, somebody just walked into the office.
Absolutely.
I was wondering if you could forward me that, that file, she never sent.
Okay.
Forward, I got, I got the agenda and the other 10 pages, but I don't have that file.
Because there, yeah, there's two attachments.
Oh, yeah.
So.
One is the master plan, and one is the minutes and all that.
Right.
You want me to forward or you got it pasted?
I got, all I got is that, that, I only got one, one piece.
Okay.
So I got one, yeah, just one.
Let me know if you, if you need.
He was gonna.
Go ahead.
Whatever.
Yeah, go ahead.
You got, you, for me to see it on here is really, you got to.
Okay, not a problem.
Forward that, that'd be great.
I'll forward right away, coming along.
I'm technology challenged enough, when it's really tiny, it's now a technology cap challenge in fence.
It's okay, sorry, I just, I'm getting on. I just sent you to Jack mostly, 123, is that right?
Thank you.
I sent you that.
That's passed to Jack.
It works.
Okay, so on page 28, your plan.
Yes.
So the total map, yes, we're working on updating that.
Absolutely, sounds good, so page 24, 28, and then 30.
24, yeah, I'm, mine's on page 29, we got both three maps.
And that's okay, we understand Nick's schedule, you know, that's all right.
I'm kind of at his mercy, so.
We are all.
I have asked him about it, and once he gets time, he will help me.
Absolutely.
I asked him if he could show me, but it's probably a longer process to show me than to just do it yourself, so. Um, hopefully soon, we will have that, both maps.
Right, right.
But as, as we continue to move forward towards July, Kim, I think that, you know, that stuff will come together, so.
Yep. Also.
All right, is, I know David, while we're in the subject of map, David Holcomb, I caught him in the hallway before the meeting today, and he said that he would get the fiber map data to you, so you should be getting that today.
Okay.
So we'll have that to include.
Perfect. I know the, the plan you guys have probably looks like a mess, but I am collecting everything and we'll get to a point where we have like a pretty clean, rough draft, and then I guess I'm assuming we'll all like race through it again and just look for typos or things that just don't belong or need to be there, you know, if we miss something, so.
Right. Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good.
All right, so if we're, if we're caught up, Kim, and I'm, will, with you, then are we okay to go on to Namu's report on the community action agency?
Mm-hmm, I believe so.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
All right, thank you for that opportunity, so we did have a very long work together on it, because we had been working for the last whole year with the other infrastructure, and then, as you do know, we were hit with that pandemic, closed down after March 11th, and so when things are happening virtually, it was a very long wait, and as you know, it took till today to bring in some reports, so we've, with housing in the vicinity for Hills Hill County, there has, what we sat and discussed was a lot of things that we could possibly bring in within the master plan. All right, and a couple of things were the housing inventory that we talked a little bit about, the age of the housing stock, new housing development, if at all we did have any. We had a variety of comparisons to make of the previous years with the housing size, the housing tenure, whether rental vacancy, local vacancy trends, we even had some of the research that we infused within that entire housing study that we had, we have in place right now, is, like I said, the cost of housing, housing affordability and all of that kind of stuff. Couple of things that really captured my attention was the talk and little info about the low income households or the affordability within the Hills Hill County to include, or the ratio, you know, of home value to household income renter of affordability, those were a couple of things that were infused. And then lastly, what was infused and brought towards a little package, if you will, which I would love to send it all to you, is the housing demographics, which basically talks about the population, it talks about the. It talks about the households by age and the renters by age as well. So those two classifications were broken down into that. Couple of other things that we also went into study that we might want to think to bring in is the demographics of, you know, with special housing needs, which were a part of the housing study. Under that, we could include the persons with low income, homelessness, disabled adults, veterans, or immigrants. I'm not quite sure what that structure would do there with immigrants. But that was a couple of things under demographics, demographics, if you will. A little comparison we brought with economics of Jackson influencing housing trends. So I will throw that in as material to look at. You know, we don't know how much you want to put in, but when it comes onto a master plan, you want to be able to kind of put a little bit of, in a nutshell, with the analysis and the strategies for addressing local market barriers. So within that housing, you know, infrastructures or the housing study, those couple of things can be added in. A couple of things that I was able to capture, to share with this board, to potentially put in into our master plan would be the housing inventory, like I talked about, with some graphs. Right from the 2017, the U.S. Census estimating, where the study was given to us as 22,009 housing units in Hillsdale County. And the housing inventory for the county grew slightly, which was, gave us infrastructure of about 254 units, if you will, in the post foreclosure decade. So it was a really good framework to bring in that kind of a housing, where you can have the analysis, if you will, all the way. The previous one had data from 2010 all the way to 2017. So you could probably do something like that, where you can put in something from 2014, if you will, all the way to this day, 2020. Then a couple of things that can be brought into that would be the age of housing stock, like I talked about. I'm a kind of person, I'm more of a data oriented, where it comes onto housing stock with Hillsdale County significantly older than for Michigan overall. So the statistics that really calls loud about in 2016, the percent that was offered to us was about 28.1% of the county's housing units were built before 1940. So that kind of infrastructure as a format we can bring in for a framework. And then a little bit, you can talk about what I looked with that statistics, is only about 15.1% of Michigan's existing housing stock is that of, that old. So in analyzing how Hillsdale County inventory has changed, that percentage of housing built pre-1949 has decreased the most since 2000. So while almost all the new housing development in the county took place by 2009, that is when we recall the foreclosure crisis, if you will, and the Great Recession's impact in stopping housing development began. So that kind of a comparison with a graph was pretty interesting to bring in. I have some really good fresh copies that we want to infuse within our master plan. Moving forward, these statistics that we can provide with a map of new housing development as it relates with, you know, data and the classes, something where, the infrastructure where I was a little bit more keen on bringing in was how Hillsdale County compares to national and Michigan trends in housing development. So I think those numbers are really critical because it talks a little bit loud about housing starts increased only slightly between 2016 and 2017. So what it was significantly brought about was the increase was the smallest since the Great Recession. And then the slowdown in housing starts was driven by a decline by 9.7% in multifamily starts nationally in the Midwest. Multifamily housing starts dropped 20%. And then the other infrastructure that we can introduce within the master plan, what was shown in the past with that housing study was that in 2017, single-family housing starts increased by 8.6% nationally, and the increase was slightly lower, which was 8.0% in the Midwest region. So most new development took place in the largest metro areas of the country. And the research that I kind of will put together was 2018 Harvard analysis of the data, which indicated that outside of the 100 largest metro areas, single-family housing permits dropped 24% from 2016. So something that, another thing that we captured within that, to infuse within our master plan was building permits issued in Hillsdale County. Well, how ironic, because those kind of data, I think, would mirror very well within what we can infuse within our, our study or analysis. The projections of the current pace of single group, single-family starts would not regain their 2,000 level of 1.23 million units started until 2022. Now, Michigan's housing start data mirrors, like I was initially talking a little bit about, with the 9% increase in private new home permits led by the southeast and west Michigan market. So the analysis that was given was about 23,623 new permits in Michigan. Now, that would include like about 70.4% were single, were for single-family homes. And 325, which is just about a fraction of a percent, roughly 2%, in my understanding, were for structures with five or more units. So for Hillsdale County, 96% of the permits issued in 2017 were for single-family homes and indicated even a greater lag in multifamily rental housing development locally. And it has stayed pretty much the same for analysis, if you will, for 2020, as we, we can include that within our infusion of the master plan. So that would have been the building permits issued in Hillsdale County. Pretty cool to look at a little bit of a graph about the single family all the way in comparison to two units, three, four units, and five-plus units, which is basically two units have been just showing zero, and then three, four units, again, zero, where five-plus units, two and two. This is the analysis. So that's a pretty neat graph that we can introduce in there, which I do have. I'd like to share it with the little research we did with the Community Action Agency last week. Couple of comparison that we can infuse as another thing is the type of housing stock. I'm really keen on looking at that to be introduced as well, similar to what I just talked about with that graph a little while back. Couple of other things, again, when we show graphs within our master plan, it really does give us a little bit output as to what we're looking at in the changes in type of housing in Hillsdale and Michigan in its entirety from 2010 to 2016 to the state 2020. So that is the kind of another thing. Another thing we can infuse what we have in place here with the Community Action Agency, with the studies they have done with the housing is the housing size, which I just talked about. A little info about it would be the consistent with the relatively older existing housing stock in Hillsdale and the minimal new housing development. So most Hillsdale housing units have two or three bedroom homes. And the note that ironically, that kind of captured my eyes as an average citizen, was the increase in four and five-bedroom homes by 2016 indicated that the new single-family housing development from 2014 was predominantly homes of this size. So a little bit of a graph of the housing units by number of bedrooms, if you want to put it out there, that's something that we want to look at as a board. You know, so those are a little bit of statistics you can do with graph-wise. Another thing that I, we worked with in the housing study was the analysis as it relates with consisting with the natural trend, with natural housing, new construction data. So that is something we want to be able to see. So those trends that we captured were from the year 2017, which shows demand for larger homes with more amenities than most of the housing found Hillsdale's aging inventory. So, and then according to the Census Bureau economic indicators, what we saw was the annual characteristics of new housing. So among homes that were built in 2017, and the percent given was 9.9%, had about two or fewer bedrooms, and 45.5% had four or more bedrooms. So these market-driven amenities and new construction need to be considered in the Hillsdale housing development strategy. So if you want to infuse that within the master plan. Another thing that really did capture during the study with the Community Action Agency, as you must know, they worked really, really closely with these departments as it relates with the study plan for the housing with the Lenovo and the nearby Jackson County. Talked about the housing tenure, something really ironic to infuse within our master plan. What captures my attention is the housing data or the national housing data, as I would say, for 2017, 18, 19, and 20 this year, which indicates that the homeownership rate, you know, has stabilized as of what would have happened in 2016 after dropping for years. So that would be some, another thing that we could bring in would be the housing tenure. And what I have, we could infuse that, which talks about again the percent. So it's, it's really a platform where we want to be able to put in within our master plan that I see here as the, the percent. And what I'm showing here, the stabilized homeownership rate, which is about 63.6%, however, reset of percentages equal to the 9090s and below the levels achieved in the 2000s before the foreclosure crisis, if you will. So another big framework, if you will, would account really strongly onto the master plan where it comes down to homeownership, to kind of bring a little bit light about what Hillsdale Housing is to offer, is the homeownership has been a bigger share of the housing market locally than nationally. And there's something that we want to be able to put this as in, is that Hillsdale suffered the same drop and reset of the homeownership rate from about 81.9%, if you will, of housing being owner-occupied from 2010 to 77.1% in 2016. And the rate of ownership in Hillsdale County consistently higher than either the state or nation today, statistically, providing from 2019 to this year. So homeowner data estimates that the county level are not yet available for 2017 to determine if homeownership has also stabilized locally. But I think with that Census Bureau information, we can infuse that and whatever data we captured from them, we can put it as graphs. Another interesting thing was with the drop in percentage of owner-occupied housing across the nation, there has been a corresponding increase in the percentage of renters. We want to be able to put that within the housing study because this natural trend is followed both by Michigan and in Hillsdale County. So within the framework of a graph, I think it's an advantage to us to infuse that within the master plan, the way we've gotten the figures within the Census Bureau, if you will. The other thing that we captured and our eyes went on would have been, what were with the housing study analysis with vacancy rates? And again, in the form of graph, what was studied, what we can infuse again is the one impact of the housing crisis in local communities was the spike in vacancy rate tied to the loss of homeowners because of foreclosures, like I just mentioned a while back. So despite that movement of households from homeowner to renter, the total number of vacant units in Hillsdale County dropped slightly. And the statistic that we've been offered by the Census Bureau was about 349 units between all the way from 2010 to this date. In Hillsdale, the total number of vacant units, both rental and owner-post-housing crisis peaked in 2010 and declined slightly by 2016. And in comparison, the impact on Jackson County's vacancy, however, peaked two years later in 2012. So the drop in vacant units, they're referring Jackson County from peak in 2012 to 2016, was about 12%. Then you can compare it and the graph basically showed about that vacancy within Hillsdale County from peak from 2010 to 2016 was about 8.2% as it relates with our neighbors, Jackson County. So to put it in that framework, a graph showing that where it includes the rental vacancy in comparison to between 6% and 7% is considered healthy, with enough supply available to absorb but not constrained movement by the renting population. So when vacancy drops below this rate, the rental market is considered tight, is usually results in new. So in new construction, if you will, to increase supply options, increase rental prices, or in reaction to higher demand or a combination of both, if you will. So that, that framework with putting in the housing data for the Hillsdale County, I think we can infuse infrastructure as it relates with what exactly is with the local vacancy trends to overall the rental vacancy rates in Michigan and Hillsdale have dropped steadily as an increasing percentage of households are renters. That was significant shown in a framework of a graph, if you will. Moving forward, what captured a little bit more attention that we are able to put in within our master plan would be a cost of housing, if you will. And then the graph basically just to showing the median housing values for both Michigan and Hillsdale County, as in real dollars, have not yet recovered from the foreclosure crisis that happened in 2008, if you will. So appearing both home values bottomed out in 2014 as medium home values in both the state and the county have not dropped since 2014. And again, we are so reliant on the Census Bureau information. So the rate of increase for median values in Hillsdale County is a smaller percent, percentage than found statewide across the census data, like I just talked about a while back. So that is something that we can put in. And what we have here is Community Action Agency, as it relates with the housing study data, they bring a lot of data to kind of show the up and down, which kind of gives you a really good clarity as it relates with the study and analysis and comparison to yours. Comparis, in comparison to the other data that I just shared with you, despite the volatility in sale prices in Hillsdale, the number of homes sold per year is surprisingly consistent, pre and most housing crisis in the county, as it relates in comparison with the Jackson County experience. So moving forward, housing affordability is something where you can also put in as a data. And affordability in housing is a factor. What has been brought to attention to infuse with our Hillsdale County is that affordability is a factor of monthly housing costs and monthly housing income. And so they've broken it down into segments. And if you will, one is the low-income households, like I talked about. And households with incomes in the lowest 25% of income ranges are more likely to be renters than homeowners. And the impact of the Great Recession on low-income households, whether renter or homeowner, have been severe. So those analyses basically were given, and we can introduce as it relates with the percent. Household in the bottom income quartile saw their housing costs rise and their incomes fall between 2001 and 2016. And what we've been offered here today with the housing data is a result, the amount that they had left over each month to pay for each, for other basic needs declined from $730 to just $590,000 real terms over this period. And moving on, it basically talks a little bit about the significantly, which is in 2001, 2016, while their monthly housing costs increased $20, leaving about $10,600 each month for other expenses. So just a little bit of idea of what we're talking in regards with our low-income households within the framework of the Hillsdale County. The other breakdown of the segment has been introduced like as homeowner affordability, which again talks a little bit about of the national market who are underwater in equity. So talked about locked into a mortgage cost that exceeds current, houses' current value at the height of foreclosure and crisis in 2009. Naturally, 28% of homeowners with a mortgage had negative equity in their home. And overall, they've given us the percentage of homeowners underwater in equity has dropped nationally to 4.8% in the first quarter of 2018. And Michigan continues to be state-leading and recovering from negative equity, if you will, partially because so many homeowners in the state were underwater at the height of the housing crisis. Couple of the other things that were introduced in full analysis were also the, the drop in the percentage of homeowners with a mortgage in Hillsdale County over time corresponds with the statewide trend. And what significant issues that they brought in was consistently fewer Hillsdale homeowners have a mortgage than found statewide. So that was a little bit of an idea to put as a framework. Another thing as we cover most of the other issues would be the strategy analysis section in, in terms with graph that's been provided by the Census Bureau, like I just talked a little bit about prior to giving you this report. The other thing that we would be finding very valuable to put it within this framework is home value ratio to household income of 4.0 or more compared. And that would be infused under the renter affordability. And another thing that I thought that was very interesting to put in, and we did a little bit of research, would have been the entire whole, the section where we talked about the mapping. And the new mapping development of uh that they've shown us with the right with the township. Um and apparently it showed about here the new construction directly after the foreclosure crisis was concentrated in the city of Hillsdale and Wright Township. And a little mapping um probably to to show that uh would be just accurate as well. A couple of things um that I wanted to cover up within that same framework. Would it be the household by age and um what the data study included was. Uh the countywide in Hillsdale, both the number of households between the ages of twenty five to forty four, and those are the very critical numbers we want to be able to. Address within our master plan and the percentages of households who are between twenty five, forty four has dropped. And uh in Hillsdale, the growing percentages for household by age category are those between forty five to fifty six and sixty five plus. And a graph been introduced, so the percent of older sixty five and older households and increase in most in Hillsdale. Uh consistent with the statewide trend and the percent of household. Householders older than sixty five is larger than Hillsdale than either Michigan or Jackson in comparison in determining household strategies. So the impact of attracting millennial households and retaining older residences as households should be both considered. So that is what we want to be able to put it into the framework. Uh another trend and pattern of householders by age in Hillsdale also varies by tenure status and as renters and homeowners. So what they've done is they've given us a broke um a breakdown of renters by age as well. So homeowners by age and renters by age as well. And the growing percent of households over sixty five are being housed both as renters and homeowners. So that's a quite a statement to put in there as well, measuring since two thousand eighteen, the move from. Homeowner to renter grew for those sixty five to eighty four in Hillsdale. But the percentage of the older or the oldest, if I may, household would be eighty five plus. Uh who are renters remain steady and a percent I'd like to uh put in that framework would be two point two percent. So this is an indication that senior living communities that have growing popularity across the county are not available choice in the Hillsdale County. So something just want to be able to put in there after what we retained with the study uh with the CAA. Um moving forward, um I think what uh another thing that to be added would be the changes in household composition. And according to the Pew Research Center's analysis, an increasing percentage of adults are in shared living arrangements. And the increase in doubling up started with the Great Recession but has continued through the recovery, hasn't changed that. So just another figure to kind of give you out there as to where we are uh in two thousand twenty. So during the Great Recession, shared living households mostly were created from millennia uh millennials, I'm sorry millennials. Moving part back in with parents as a recession receded, an increasing percentage uh comes instead. From parents moving in with adult children. So um how shared housing is defined in the Pew analysis, I just want to be able to give you an idea about that. The household has at least one adult who is not the household head, the spouse or unmarried partner of the head of the household or an eighteen to twenty four year old student. So in two thousand seventeen, thirty one point nine percent of the adult U.S. population lived in a shared household. From and the data remains steady as of today with two thousand twenty, up from twenty seven point four percent of adults sharing a household in two thousand four. So not all shared households are multi general as the combined adults could be siblings or unrelated adults. And uh moving forward, a couple of things that were added interestingly within that framework would be lower mobility across age categories. Um I don't know if that is something new uh to see, but with the U.S. Census Bureau and the population figures that we've received today. The information that I was able to research with our fine group with the Community Action Agency was. That experts have identified several demographics trends leading to lower mobility. So newer is the higher percentage of younger adults who continue to live with their parents and not moving into their own households. Experts also see rise student debt as a growing factor, making it harder for younger adults to move out. So additionally, the loss of lower cost rentals in many housing markets. Uh leaving about fewer options for moving into new households seen as a slowing mobility. So just the subject to kind of put in that framework within that master plan would be uh lower mobility across age categories. And that's the info what I just shared that with you, that came straight from the U.S. Census. So finally, the analysts identified the increase in two earner households. Uh more frequently required to form the household as limiting the mobility of younger households below traditional rates. And uh now just so you know, this may change as the job market becomes more competitive, okay, for employers. Uh allowing for negotiations on behalf of both income earner, expanding options to move jointly. So the statistic that we've realized with that is older adults traditionally move the least by age category, those age fifty and older. Are seeing are moving even less than in the past. So this has trickle down effect of um constricting the start, the starter, if you will, the starter home buyer options for buying. And uh moves by empty nesters have traditionally been the source of existing housing rather than new construction for the first time buyers. Um a little comparison, if you will.
Commissioner.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This is all fascinating.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm hearing a lot of national stuff, but I'm not hearing Hillsdale County's this.
No, this is Hillsdale County.
So.
It is Hillsdale County.
Okay.
Uh we're also com- we're not comparing to the national because those data are not something that we are interested in. What I am giving you is the uh picture of the housing study within the Hillsdale County.
Okay.
So what you're going to be provided with is a lot, like I earlier said, with a lot of lengthy stuff. But you still have the ability to, you know, compact it with graphs, just Hillsdale County and which which we do have with the Community Action Agency. We're not comparing um apples to something else. We're we're uh we might be throwing in a comparison to our neighborly counties. Uh but even then, we're just sticking to the county uh percent right now. We're we're not talking anything numbers as it relates nationally. Um and um so that that's we're not doing anything nationally, just so you know.
Some of the stuff that you're saying is like. Okay, so the older people don't have mortgages, that's common sense. I mean, they bought a house, they build a house. Yeah, that's just common sense stuff, I mean, I don't know where it's got any importance in that.
I guess, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just, a lot of this stuff you're talking about just doesn't. You know, it's like the the homes and a lot of the homes, say a single family home now can be. Five or six people living together in a household.
Right.
Not even related to each other.
Yeah, like a three unit family, that's right.
They got a community room and they got twenty bedrooms. And that's a single family nowadays, or it can be, I'm not saying it is, it can be. I mean, I just, a lot of this information, I think is like, I I know it's probably important, but I don't see where we need to get all this.
And you don't have to. I my my job is to provide what you think you would want to infuse um within that framework. And you know, just going back to single family units, uh we are sticking with the facts. Hillsdale County does have more than single family units, so which means what I'm giving you the fact is, which is um. We have one home and three units living with with under one uh home. And that is a fact because we do have it within our range of uh townships. Hmm that's quite a common thing and and reason I'm saying is because we've had to work with those facts within our townships. Uh just kind of putting out there, so this these uh statistics, Jack, that I'm sharing, you don't necessarily have to put it. But if you have it in place, you can sift through and see what you want to be able to, because the main thing, the townships, uh they do have all those things. Just let me tell you this, in within our townships, so because the township that I come from is a largest population of over forty six hundred plus, forty six hundred uh forty four plus. And uh having to have that, we do have whole housing units that are not just single family. And so we've had to adapt to make changes to our master plan that contributed. To the realistics that we're dealing with that family, single family units are there, but also in existence, we have more than two and three into one. Who are not related, who are not related, if I may.
Bring us the graphs in.
Yeah.
Let the group look at the graphs.
Yeah, you can look in, you can change whatever you want to.
The master plan, but a lot of it is.
I think what we're getting here is we're getting depth by data and 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 we really, we need. You to condense this down and whether you do it or you work maybe in conjunction with Sue, the information. Another person I can think of would be a good access would be Commissioner Gaines because she's a real estate agent. And she has, I think, a a good view from the standpoint of what people outside of our county would be looking for. Because the purpose of our master plan isn't to provide pages and pages of data.
No, that's that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm talking about.
We really need for you, rather than present all of this information, to condense it down. Into what would be a proper contribution for the county master plan, because.
Which is why I gave you some information, you can you can make it compact, you can compact it, um what. You can.
And we think to do is just look at what's already there and maybe update the numbers and maybe add a little bit. And update the graphs, we do already have um the number of single family residential units, multiple homes, multi family, that's already in there.
Right, so.
Housing is already in there.
That's 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 perfectly fine and so.
Subsidized housing, I think maybe, I don't, I think maybe just updating and maybe adding a couple small pieces to um. That section, I think would be.
Yeah, and that's what you want to be able to do is whatever you have right now, if you want to be able to update something with data, do that. My job was to um explain the length of the research that we did. Uh and the thing is, yes, it does seem um very lengthy, you don't have to add hundred pages towards it. You can add, like Kim rightly said, whatever you have, you want to be able to update it and and put in those, like I said. But other than that, um you can always, you know, sift some change. I mean, there's a lot of stuff, but um you don't necessarily have to put hundred pages in it, and this is not hundred pages. I decided to give you a little overall look.
Right.
About what exactly, when it comes on to Hillsdale, a housing study or housing, you know, platform. I just want to be able to tell you something, we're not looking, comparing uh to cities, that's not who we are. Hillsdale County in its entirety is rural and uh in understanding that, just kind of giving you a a picture about. What exactly in depth are we doing? Because rather we have some information to work with or rather no information to now be able to work with. So I uh concur, uh you know, look into what you want to be able to put, the graphs have been pretty much steady. Uh and like I said, I'm just gonna forward it to you and um, you know. Look into what you want to be able to put, because we do have the housing side, you've got tenure, you've got rates and low income housing and homeowner. You don't want to add everything, whatever is there right now, if you feel the need to add and update, go with the uh information that we have. I think the best part of everything is when Kim would be able to enter a framework, get that draft.
Right.
Uh ready, uh we can then be able to take or input whatever is more advisable. So that's all it is, so i- it's nice to have a little extravagant uh picture about the study that we're doing. Uh but also let's not forget that um we want to be able to have something in place, uh you know, as a county. Uh and and that's all it is.
Okay.
And we don't need to seek in Region Two or somebody else, although they are really great, but we've got to look at our cost effectiveness as well.
Well, if you could send that stuff along, maybe you could share it with all of us and we can.
Yes, absolutely.
And digest it.
See what you want to be able to do with it, yeah.
That would be awesome. Anything else you'd like to add and then maybe we.
Yeah, that's all it is, you know, to add those things. The one thing that I'd like to also see, uh and um forgive me, I have not looked at the page where it talked anything about homelessness. Uh you know, we want to be able to put that as demographics, uh with persons with special housing needs, one would be the homelessness and the other would be veterans. Uh these are something two important factors that we'd like to look at within the Hillsdale County. So those are two important thing I'd like to say and then I'm gonna send this to all of you and, you know, it's a it's a it's a set length. And uh just just see what can be added and what can be deleted. Uh we can always pick and choose uh in regards with whatever influences on housing trends.
Sure.
So.
Thank, thank you.
And thank you and uh my apologies for going at length, but I'm a very detailed person, you'd rather have information or you have no information at all, so.
No, I I I appreciate yours and uh and Toby's efforts on getting all of that stuff, so. We just, we 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 have a PA one sixteen we still have to get done and hopefully let people get back to the rest of their afternoon making money.
I will just um interrupt quickly, as we were speaking, I did get, I did send um. The master plan that I sent you guys to Harmony, just to have her look at it when I was in this office last, like two Fridays ago. And she was able to look it over and sent me a three page um just suggestions sort of thing, just some things that we may want to look at and consider. So rather than reading it to you, I will forward that to all of you this afternoon, so you can all take a look at it.
Okay.
Some things, those words are pressing.
All right, so why don't we, well, since we're, so we can tie this up under our unfinished business with the ongoing work on the master plan. Why don't we just go around if there's anyone that has anything that they want to add? So Troy, do you have anything? Aaron, anything that we're missing?
No.
Thank you, Sue?
No, anything that I can help to update and finalize, continue and I can have a conversation afterward.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, Jack, anything?
No.
Jackie?
No.
All right, except, you know, we're we're continuing to move forward, it looks like we tied up some some loose ends for last from last time. So Kim, if you can go ahead and get those additional edits added in there, we'll look forward to seeing Harmony's uh response. And so we can consider those on our ongoing work on this as we're moving forward. All right, we're gonna move on to new business, we have a PA one sixteen application from Anis and Miriam Iker. I did look through that, I did see they actually filled out the number of years they wanted, because that seems to be the the hard one.
So two things, I did place check mark on fifteen, based on the fact that they are joint owners in the parcel.
Okay.
And then they did not include on sixteen what the type of ag enterprise it was.
Okay.
I did contact of the teams over in the clerk's office and they said they don't typically follow up on any of those and shy of mailing them. This to them, which I did not, um.
Okay, this was on section, what now, Kim, I'm sorry?
Uh number sixteen, basically just saying was it cash crops, livestock.
Okay.
He eats cash crops, but I don't know.
I'm trying to find sixteen on this.
I don't see sixteen.
I don't either, I maybe there was a page missing?
Yeah, we're.
I think maybe, because.
Page two is missing on the document, page two is there. It's um, well, I can, I'll send this to you if you want to, but it's telling what their type of crops is, if it's livestock, cash crop, fruit.
Okay, if you could, if you could get me that information, Kim, I will be delighted to make a farm visit and go see these folks. And um I will, will follow up on that and get that, if you'll just let me know what it is that you need. So if you could send me that, the missing page, send everyone the missing page and then.
Well, my apologies.
No, there's no problem, and then that way we can get this little happy back then on our agenda because we're missing components. So I'm I'm glad you caught that, because it seems like that, that seems to be an ongoing issue with some of these PA one sixteens. We're just, we're missing pieces and we have to go out and gather more data, so. But I I will be happy to take that assignment on if you'll give me that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Jackie. Jack, you gotta leave? All right, so we will have that follow up um then on next, our next meeting. Um I added on a discussion of the future of a planning commission, I just wanted to make make some comments in that regard. I think that I have spoken pretty strongly in the past that. If if we are in fact going to have a planning commission, that we we need to have support from the Board of Commissioners in regards to having it. So I wanted to actually get a little feedback. So I wanted to actually get a little feedback from all of you because as we're moving through the budget process and just some comments that I heard one of our commissioners say in regards to the planning commission, which relates directly back to the budget, I really just want to poll everyone here and see what your thoughts are going forward because, number one, Kim's help has been invaluable. And just going back to my own experience, when we had Deb Coffing as the Secretary of the Board of Commissioners, she did a lot of the work that Kim is doing today. And then Nick was doing it and Nick said, "I can't do it, it's just too much." And with Nick to say that, because Nick's the kind of guy that, I mean, he's a workaholic and he does, he keeps a lot of balls in the air, but usually he can dig in and add one more thing. So if he said it was too much, I believe it was too much. And so we very graciously had Kim funded for us. Unfortunately, right now in the process of moving for the budget for next year, Kim's position isn't funded. And very honestly, I heard at a Jefferson Township meeting Commissioner Caswell say that he felt the Hillsdale County Planning Commission was totally invaluable and that we really did nothing, that we didn't review zoning updates, which I know in my time here is completely untrue, that we really don't do anything. I mean, these PA 116s, the commissioners can do those things, but if we don't, somebody from the Board of Commissioners, because nobody in the clerk's office is gonna run down to find out what kind of crops that the Ikers have on their farm. So that means that somebody from the Board of Commissioners is gonna have to run if the planning commission doesn't exist. So really, I guess the reason why I wanted to add this on here is, is, you know, do we want to continue to have a planning commission? And, you know, if we are, I think that we need to send a unified message back to the full, all five commissioners that, yes, we do feel that the planning commission has value, that the people who sit on this is volunteers and we're volunteers, that, you know, we take a couple hours out of our day every few months to come here and the work that we do does have value or we wouldn't be here. So I guess I'd like to open the floor up for some discussion on that and see what everyone's thoughts are in regards to the future of this body.
I'd like to say something.
Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you so much for this opportunity that I could say something. I would like to bring to how this all started. As you know, that we have put in a lot of care for our community, that's why we're here. Now, about a good few weeks back, it was one of the Board of Commissioners who came and asked of me to call Eric Loetzer's office. And Eric's office, if you will, I had no idea, they do deal with legislation, I was told, and certain things in regards to the county planning commission. So I was offered the number by the commissioner concerned and asked of me to call that number to find out if the planning commission for the county is necessary or not. And I said, "All right, I will make a call." And as you must have probably received a copy of it, that my question to Eric's and his legislation office was to find out how many other counties do have a county planning commission, what all they do, any which ways. Because I'm used to having township planning commissions that I'm a part of and I contribute my time voluntarily and I contribute all my efforts, being a wife and a mother, I do that, do my best. Any which ways, the response that came from the Director of Legislation, if you will, from Chelsea, Chelsea is a name, I can pull up the name, Chelsea Malkak, I believe, from Eric Loetzer's office. And the information that we received that the county doesn't necessarily have to have a county planning commission, that was, whether it doesn't say anywhere that you cannot be in existence. So that related all back to, as a county, what was brought back to the commissioner who put that in question for me to ask this was, I made it pretty much clear, I said, "I'd like to know, I'd like to see our budget in place." And go to find out, I had not heard anything from the commissioner because I don't sit on the finance committee. And so when I did happen to find out from the Finance Director Derek Raymond as to what do we have in our budget, go to see, we had only $280 in that budget. And I said, "Well, this won't do." Because I had, if you remember, a while back, Kim Jackson had gotten in touch with Harmony and then they provided us a proposal to bring to the Board of Commissioners to have a look at, you know. And if you saw, we had various packages and one was also to look at it without any cost. Because all this time, I had been, for the last whole year, the Board of Commissioners did not want to see even the Region Two give us any feedback because Region Two, our membership fees, they are a little bit more wider. All right, so I understand there wasn't any budget for that, but they put it down for us for the proposal from the MSU as well. So here we are left with no information and we had one of the Board of Commissioners who decided to, without asking me or the Chair of this planning commission, to see what our budget should be. And when I did find, found out, did find out about what we had in our budget was $280. Now, long story short, what my proposal here to our Board of Commissioners has been, and I've been talking all along to the only one person who listens to me, would have been the Chair of the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Wiley, that to please put in some monies that we are able to put as a stipend or for our board members, who even take some time to come at 1 o'clock to the meeting, you know. And that is number one. Number two, if we are to be funded, to at least keep it to whatever that we can run as a county planning commission, we're not asking to dissolve it. It is up to us as county planning commission or us as a public servant to see if we should have a county planning commission. But I also believe what we started, we need to finish. So if we have a county planning commission, we're not asking for a huge budget, we're very blessed to have Kim Jackson. I don't understand why this was brought up by one of the commissioners that we don't do any work, but we do a lot of work. And one thing what we don't do is we don't tell our townships to adopt A, B, and C, but we encourage them to have A, B, and C or not have A, B, and C at all. So my only mission here is to, because I, this, next month would be my last month with you all, if I may, because I am done completing my term as a county commissioner for District Five. So you will have to work this and put a legwork to have the county planning commission to complete what will expire or, you know, in 2021, in July. So the county planning commission, to keeping at a minimum with having Kim with us, has been a blessing because she, everybody else here is busy, so we can have Kim, you know, at least put minutes together and, you know, foresee things to be put in a draft, go into approval with public hearing. So that is just the two cents that I have to put in here, is I was totally misguided by one of the commissioners who had no idea, left completely penniless, if you will, in the budget, which I am not okay with.
My question is, so who's the commissioner?
I'm the Board Liaison, so, you know, I think I should have been brought.
Who was the commissioner that brought this up?
Oh, Mr. Bruce Caswell, if you will.
I think we do something, I think we need to be here. And like you said, it's, we're volunteers. We just need a little bit of money to support what we have to do. I mean, we're not asking for $20,000 or nothing. I mean, we're just asking for a minimal amount of money to support the planning commission. I think you get your townships bringing their master plans all in and we all need to be in a circle. I mean, we can't have a zigzaggy looking master plan. So we all have to kind of agree and all work together to get that circle or square, whatever you want to call it. It can't be some off-the-wall zigzaggy thing that doesn't make any sense at all.
Like Congressional History, Matt.
Yeah, yeah. I agree, I just, I guess I don't understand, I know he's tight or whatever you want to call it, but I don't know how he can say that we do nothing or never have done anything. I mean, I don't understand that. I mean, we need the planning commission, that's my thought.
Sue, I'm gonna pick on you next, if that's okay? And that is, is from the economic development standpoint, how important is it that A, we have a county master plan and B, have a planning commission? In other words, when you're out trying to sell Hillsdale County to somebody to locate their business here, how important are these documents and our functions to that?
Okay, can we, I can? Okay, there we go. I think the county voice is important. It's nice that, you know, the individual townships do put together a master plan and our cities do that, but I do believe it just shows a level of professionalism in the community that we do have a county document that shows an overall understanding of, you know, what the planning is for Hillsdale County. And I'm unsure why someone would not find value. Of course, if you've never sat at the table, you don't understand, it's like anything. If you don't sit at the table, you don't understand the amount of work that goes into the work that we do or anyone else, you know, unless you're there and you're a part of it. So that might be, you know, why that song is there, I don't know. But certainly if you look at the people that are around the table putting this document, putting work into this, you know, in two hours' time, I would say there are hundreds of dollars in people's time between wages and benefits and our time that go into each and every meeting that we have. And I would hate to feel that the commission finds value of us.
And I would say from an, I mean, that was what you're saying, I'll reply to. Families looking at moving into the area to get a job, but also to look at school systems, what's going on with hospitals, availability, you know, where great places to purchase a house or purchase property. I think if you don't have that document, it's hard to draw people into the area and go, they're just guessing what's gonna be the best scenario, the best place for their families.
Erin?
I guess my only thoughts is somebody, somebody has to do what we do. I don't understand why they would want to dismantle the planning commission. I feel, I feel that we do, but that, I feel that it is necessary.
All right, everyone, everyone had a chance to check in on this. Kim, you want to check in officially in the minutes?
What was that, Brad?
I say, would you like to, I know you're not a member of the planning commission, but we certainly would like your voice on this, either officially or unofficially. What are your thoughts?
I mean, I would probably just be in agreeance with what everyone's saying and I like how Sue said that if you're not at the table, you don't necessarily understand the value of what other people are doing and what it provides to people outside the room or away from the table as to what we have here to offer. It is a lot of time, like, you know, you're all saying that we're all coming to these meetings and giving our input and trying to help make the community as a whole a better place and that we're all encircled together.
So, thank you. So I guess what I would like to see is, is I would open the floor up for some form of a motion to take back to the Board of Commissioners of support for the continuance of the planning commission and for it to continue to be funded, including enough money so that we might continue to have Kim for one day a week. Because I honestly don't feel that we can effectively do our job without having the reinforcement of Kim doing those things.
I move that we take this to the Board of Commissioners as stated by Brad for the request of the minutes.
Is there a support for that? Troy, was that you? I saw him go up.
Troy, support.
Very good. All right, is there any discussion or would anyone else like any additional comments on this?
I think that the way this was went about was like kind of a stab in the back for them. I mean, I just, you know, they're throwing her under the bus to be the person that's saying stuff which, and I know, because I've kind of looked at those minutes and I thought, well, why aren't they saying that when, you know, she's on the planning, I know that she doesn't feel that we're not doing anything.
It's a lot of work.
I did, that's why I asked you who it was.
Okay.
To me, it came from you.
I didn't want to put him under the bus, but he's always been.
That's, yeah, so that's my feeling about it. We need the planning commission, we need a little bit of money or some money to support our staff as a secretary. I know since I've been on here, there was other people that were secretary and they just say they can't handle it. We have to have a secretary. I mean, that's my feeling.
Mr. Chair, pardon me, I just have three things. So what I would like to take to the board is, if you will, board members, is the same thing that I had been requesting the Chair of Board Commissioners for a long time, is to give us a budget. Now, the budget, number one, is that I would like to see us cover Kim Jackson's one day of the week, as mentioned. That is number one. I believe it's about roughly $7,000 per year, something like that, but I can cross-check that. The second thing is I want to be able to take to the Board of Commissioners is some kind of a per diem, like thing where board members of the planning commission take some time off to come to be and to make this planning commission a board. So if your time is valuable, it's just like any other, you know, board committee out there in the townships, we're paid some kind of a stipend. So I would like to see that, number two. And number three is I would like to also see some minimum amount to put aside for advertisement, which would be something that would be, I think, apart from the salary of Kim Jackson, that would be advertisement or anything when we do our public hearings and put all those things into a platform. So those are the three things I'd like to put in. But I also would like to mention this, other than the three things, is that, you know, I will not be on the board after December. As you may have already seen, as a board rep, I represent the Board of Commissioners. So what is going to happen is we do have openings, you know, such as, we've not filled in one position, if you will, we just haven't been able to get somebody. And the other position is, well, these positions are required with everybody's credentials. So if we can levy a little ease on those, because we're not able to, you know, reach those categories because of the stipulations, because we just go with what the legislation requires of us, if somewhere down the line as county planning commission, that we can bring it to the Board of Commissioners to ease that, so we can be able to have members who are truly interested in committing themselves to this board for the betterment of our county. You know, that is what we want to be able to see. So that's just something that I wanted to, if you want to discuss that, how we're going to see that, because we have not been able to cover that one position. Are we going to ease any position so people can participate just out of care for the community?
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, then we have a motion. Kim, you want to read that back? You've got it in your minutes, please.
What's that?
Would you read back the motion as you have it in your minutes?
Um, what you said, we're just making a motion to the commissioners that we would recommend continuance of the planning commission with those three requests of secretary one day a week, some sort of a per diem for the travel and time of the members and a minimum of amount of monies for advertisement, of public hearings, et cetera.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose the same? Wave your hand if you're opposed. Seeing no waving, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for that. I think the work that we do here is good work and I think it's very important work. So thank you for your time and your continued. So thank you for your time and your continued, your support of being here. All right. Moving on, public comment. We will open up the floor one last time for any public comment or anyone that may have joined us. Seeing none. Do we have any communications, Kim?
No.
All right, is there any other business before the Hillsdale County Planning Commission? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I don't know.
All right, we have motion to adjourn. And are you supporting that, Commissioner? All right, we have a support by Commissioner Carolyn. It's undebatable, all in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Oppose the same? All right, we are adjourned until our next session. Kim, when's our next session? In January?
January.
All right.
It's the January 18th.
January 18th? All right, I will, as of this Thursday, I am no longer a township supervisor. So consequently, I will no longer be able to fulfill the position and we will not, we will have, hopefully, our Board of Commissioners' assignments by the first week of January. So I have no idea if I will be back. I am willing to serve as the liaison, but we will see how commissioned assignments take out.
Yep, and with that, I will not be returning back because I'm not a Board of Commissioner anymore.
You could, not as a commissioner, but you could.
But how?
Are you on, are you on any of the township committees?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, then you could apply as township representative because we need a township representative.
Okay, I very much would like to.
So fill out, you know, the application for the clerk's office. It's on the website. We'll get one from Marty.
Are you sure? Because it didn't say anything other than, you know, who, whatever credentials.
Yeah, you just have to represent township. So if you are on a board, if you're appointed to, you're the planning commissioner or anything else that would qualify you to represent the township government.
All right, thank you for that.
I'm hoping that Brad stays on as the commission representative.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think so. We can recommend that and I can recommend that if he's okay with it.
Like I say, you know, I'm more than willing to continue.
I would recommend that. And now, Kim, are you still there?
I am and just, like, I know Jack Mosley mentioned...